It's seven P M. I will call the Germantown School District Board of Education Meeting to order. Item one, uh, whoop, sorry, item one pledge allegiance, let's stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Reuter, official meeting notification.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have been requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and the West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Mr. Barney, roll call.
Ewert?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Barney's here. Loth?
Here.
Medved?
Here.
Pollack?
Here.
Higginbotham?
Item two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Seeing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, that passes. Item three reports a district administrator update. Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you. Hopefully you all noticed you have a bright shiny mug in front of you with some treats in it. That's in appreciation of School Board Week, which was two weeks ago. Thank you for your service on the board, as there's many long hours and tough decisions that go into those roles. So we appreciate the work you do. I'll keep my report short this evening, as we have many reports this evening. We have a lot of guests this evening, so I'm used to the time on them. Just a reminder, this Friday, October twenty-fifth, is a no-school day for students. It is a district professional development day. I know Mr. Mizziak has and Ms. Cole have a lot planned that day for our teaching staff and our administration, specifically around the science of reading and training related to that, some work with CISA six related to math. And all district teachers in attendance on Friday will work with administration as we utilize our supplemental materials policy to look at itemizing and doing an audit of our materials that align to the board-approved standards. So Friday is going to be a very busy but needed day for professional development across the district.
Thank you. Item B, GHS Wallace Sound Invitation to Spain, Youth Music of the World. Have they?
They are, Mr. Bell here?
Yeah.
He was here. I know that the group that was coming to invite the band to Spain for an international trip was going to formally do that here, but they were stuck in traffic. So, have you seen Mr. Bell?
Mr. Bell was here, but he's in the cafeteria.
We have quite a few reports, we can...
Is it the cafeteria?
Sure, we can continue with the reports and come back.
Yeah, that works.
Thank you.
Oh, Andrew, actually, if you could stay here, because you're up next on the agenda. I think Melissa's got it.
Item C, W A S B twenty-twenty-four Business Honor Roll, GHS Administration.
Yep, I invite Mr. Rooney from the high school to come up and invite our guest up as well. As we just tonight present Wisconsin Association School Board Business Honor Roll to Pinnacle. And I'll let Andrew take this over.
I would like to formally introduce Todd Kotke, Vice President of Operations for Pinnacle, have to say a few words. Thank you for having me here tonight. I've been working with the school district here now for about a year and a half. Reached out to one of the teachers when we found out that there was a growing need for employees. Because everybody knows the job market's pretty hard trying to get people in. I was a scout leader for over twenty-five years and saw some of my scouts with the grafting program that you guys have very similar here, go on to develop to become mechanics and welders and things like that. So when I knew that Germantown had also put together a program like that, I reached out to the school here, was welcomed with open arms, was able to come into some of the school classrooms and kind of present what Pinnacle had to have for as far as a little bit of a opportunity to get their hands dirty and full of sawdust. And we've had three of your students come through. One right now is taking a semester off or a school year off before he goes on to Milwaukee, or Madison Area Technical College. But he'll be working in our shop, working full-time, getting experience. He's been working on our CNCs, our laser, contributing quite a bit. And the nice part about it is the youth, they have a certain energy and vigor. That you've got these guys that have been working in the industry for twenty, thirty years. It's nice to have some youth in there every day and kind of the energy that they bring. So I appreciate the programs that you guys have put together, the investment that you guys have done in the school here. It takes a lot to get the community involved, to vote on referendums, to bring in that type of stuff. And in the end, it really does help the community in general, to help future employers, employees work together. So appreciate it. Thank you.
Pinnacle began its partnership with Germantown High School just this past school year. Upon its inception, Pinnacle participated in our speaker series, which gave students hands-on insight into the woodworking field. The speaker series takes place during resource for any student who is interested in learning more about business. They have since hired several of our students to perform various roles within their company. Specifically, students who have engaged in our architecture and construction pathway have found entry-level jobs at Pinnacle. Todd Kotke, Pinnacle's Vice President of Operation, has been the driving force in building this partnership. Todd demonstrates a commitment to introducing students to the field of woodworking and developing their employability skills as part of his workforce. Moreover, Pinnacle has expressed interest in working with our graphic design students in the spring as part of their transition towards an e-commerce model. We are grateful for their continued efforts to connect our students with real-world opportunities.
Fantastic.
Todd, please take this away. I appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Kotke, before you leave, I just want to say thank you for opening your business to us and to our students. I think it's a fantastic partnership as we continue as Board of Education and specifically Chris's leadership to push out beyond our walls into the community. Fantastic work on your end. Thank you. D, Student Representative Reports.
October has been an exciting month so far for Amy Bell. On Wednesday, October second, the firefighters from Bridgefield Fire Department came for their yearly fire presentation. Students were able to take a tour of an ambulance and help spray the fire hose. Amy Bell participated in our Amy Bell Olympics on Friday, October fourth. This event was hosted by our PTA. Students were able to fundraise prior to the event. Our school goal was fifteen thousand, and students raised almost eighteen thousand dollars. Because we met our school goal, Principal Chandelier dressed up as an Olympic superfan and handed out popsicles to all the students this week. On Tuesday, October eighth, children's author Bob Shea met with our K through third grade students. He shared two of his books, a lot of information related to his author's craft, did some illustrating with students, and signed copies of his books. October is in full swing at County Line, with many exciting events and activities taking place. Our first through fifth grade students engaged in math testing, providing valuable insights into their progress and next steps for both ELA and math. Teachers have already began to dig into the data to support their instructional practices. We recently held a comic code assembly to reinforce our school's values, highlighting responsibility as a focus. Our fifth grade students had a fantastic experience during their Up 'em Woods overnight field trip. We've also enjoyed trips to the pumpkin farm, adding some seasonal fun to our schedule. Additionally, all staff participated in a professional development session focused on using data to better support their professional goals and driving small groups, ensuring we continue to meet the needs of all our students. It has been an exciting beginning to the school year for students and staff at MacArthur Elementary. In September, the entire school enjoyed learning about the deaf community during our district-wide Deaf Awareness Week. Field trips are well underway, with many happening in October, including first graders visiting the River Edge Nature Center and kindergarten visiting Pumpkin Farm. Later in the month, our third graders will be visiting the Bradley Symphony Center and the Milwaukee Army Museum. Our kindergarten through third grade students have been assessed in Ames Web, and our first through fifth grade students have completed math testing. These assessments allow teachers to look for strengths and opportunities for teaching, monitoring student progress, and providing targeted support. This year, a new positive incentive, Eagle of the Week, was introduced at MacArthur. This award goes to one student in each classroom every week who embody the value word of the month. Value words so far have included kindness, responsibility, and respect. The beginning of the school year has gone very smoothly over at Rockfield Elementary. On October third, students from K four through third grade received a visit from the Germantown Fire Department to learn about fire safety. There have been many PTA events thus far, such as this year's first Fun Lunch, a successful dine and donate event at Dairy Queen, the Fall Book Fair from October seventh through October eleventh, and a fabulous Rocktober Family Festival, the night of October eleventh. This month, Rockfield's focus trait is responsibility, helping students understand the importance of making decisions that have a positive impact on others. School is back in full swing this October at KMS. Students have started participating in academic career planning, which allows students to thoughtfully develop their post-secondary plans through lessons around employability skills, interest exploration, and goal setting. The KMS Key Club also had a food drive to support our local food pantry at St. Gabriel and St. Boniface from October fourth through the ninth. Finally, the KMS PTA is running a box tops fundraiser to help raise funds for the school. At Germantown High School, we recently hosted nineteen foreign exchange students and three teachers from Germany, who had a great time getting to know our students and seeing what school in the United States is like. They were able to see our homecoming week and attend multiple after-school events. They are excited for our students to go and visit them this summer. Thank you to Mr. Mike Knox for all his hard work and organization. Nearly one thousand students attended our homecoming dance a couple weeks ago and had a great time. Finally, we have two national merit semifinalists at Germantown High School, Jane Tretheway and Evan Nally, both seniors. Sixteen thousand students are recognized across the nation, so congratulations to both of you on your outstanding achievements. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Are we ready for B?
Yep.
B will go back to GHS Wallace Sound Invitation to Spain, Youth Music of the World.
Good evening. Just a quick, John Bell, High School Band Director, Amy Stone, High School Band Director, Youth Music of the World, just a small clarification. Our Wall of Sound is our most active this weekend, and it's a very successful weekend, but this is a full band trip. It is not restricted to our Wall of Sound members. And, but, I'm going to turn this over. Mr. Bob Bone from Youth Music of the World.
Hello, good evening, everybody. I'm somewhat surprised to be in this room. I wasn't expecting to be doing this. But anyway, I'm Bob Bone from Youth Music of the World, the chairman and chief exec of that organization. And we represent some of the finest events for marching bands in Europe. London's New Year's Day Parade, which this band has performed in many times, Paris Prey, Rome New Year. And also, we work in partnership with Madrid Testino and the Ayuntamiento de Madrid for the Caballero de Reyes in Madrid on the fifth of January every year. And we are here this evening to offer formally the invitation to Germantown High School Marching Band to participate in that event on the fifth of January. It's a fantastic event. It celebrates Epiphany, the coming of the three kings, Caballero de Reyes, Cavalcade of the Kings. It is broadcast all around the world, or all Spanish-speaking parts of the world, anyway. Has a street audience in the center of Madrid, where around about two million people come out to see it on the fifth of January every year. Only two North American bands are invited every year. We have those invitations in our gift, and Germantown High School is receiving one of those for twenty-twenty-six. Thank you.
Ed, I'm not going to give up a microphone without giving a huge round of applause and congratulations to the members of the Wall of Sound this weekend at the State Marching Band Championships. Scored their highest score ever of eight point eighty-three point zero seven five, second place in AAA. We've never, it's our first second-place finish. We've finished third many times. And we also won the Music Caption Award, which in AAA means that we had the best music performance of the day in that class, and extremely proud of the work the students put in and how they performed this weekend.
Mr. Bell, Mr. Stone, thank you for your leadership of not only this great event that we've been invited to this evening, but the work over this last weekend and the continued success of this amazing music program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go back to F, Twenty-twenty-four Summer School Report, Jake Mizziak. I'm sorry, E, I apologize. We do a performing arts center update. Ms. Heather Kulis.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm here to give my October update for the PAC. It's the beginning of our season, so I'm just going to go through a bunch of the shows that are coming up. And of course, I'll take questions after. So first up, we have four plays and musicals being produced by the high school and the middle school. We have Radium Girls, which is just not this weekend, but next weekend. So come by for that. It's a dramatic play based on a real story. We have Six, the musical, coming up in February, Shrek the Musical Junior in February with the middle school. And Footloose is our spring musical. We also have two fundraisers being hosted in the PAC I want to highlight. We're going to have a magic show with Glenn Gerard in support of Dramatic Impact on the eighth. And the choir is doing its annual Choir Cabaret. It's going to be retro-themed this year. So we're really looking forward to that as well. PAC Communities Series Events, these are events that are put together with the PAC Community Advisory Team. This is the first year of shows selected by that team. And we have our first, like, big shows, so we're really excited for this. We did already host the World Culture Fest. That was a multicultural festival. That was a free event. We had at least a hundred people show up for that. There were many school clubs. We also had many local businesses. We had two martial arts groups. There was an Indian dance group and several other dance performances. There was a food truck. We had stuff in the lobby. It was a really great time. We have, coming up in January, it's our celebration of that new piano purchase that we had last spring. So that is going to be a big, wonderful concert on that piano to celebrate that. We have, coming up in February, the First Brigade Band is stopping by to host a concert with us. And hopefully, we're going to invite some other bands to attend and have workshops around that. Definitely authentic, like, Civil War-era military musicians, which is great. And then, last but not least, we have a Journey Bon Jovi Tribute Band coming March seventh. So I highly encourage anybody that wants to see those, there's already tickets online, so you can go ahead and get those. And if you are interested in participating in the Community Advisory Team, shoot me an email, because I'm sure we would love more people to join that team and help to put together these fabulous shows for the PAC. Moving forward, we do host Family Film Fridays here about twice a year when things slow down. So you can take a look at those movies coming up. They're great for little kids. We love doing those Family Film Fridays. Kids show up in their jammies. It's very chill. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a breakdown on where we are at with our rentals. I've highlighted some of the performances in our brochures, but that does not encompass everything that we do here at the PAC. We have, at the moment, fifteen different rental organizations. Most of those rental organizations are renting from us every year. Some of them have two shows a year, many of them. It'll be like a holiday show and a springtime show. And most of them are repeat renters, which is really good, consistent revenue for us. This year, we had three new organizations join us. We had two, we lost one. Was lucky enough to get a recital space in their new studio, so we're very happy for them. And the other one, just the dates, we couldn't find a date that was going to work out for them. Total is about forty-five performances, plus lots of dress rehearsals, so it is a significant amount of time at the PAC. And I have the projected revenue for this year. It is pretty consistently staying up at that level the past couple of years. Next slide. So I was asked about this. How do we find renters for the PAC? If you have any questions about this, I'm happy to answer them. But first couple of years, you know, it was a lot of outreach directly to groups to build up that base. A lot of the renters we have have come from other PACs that just didn't have the time to host them anymore. There were some targeted mailings that went out, especially to dance studios in the area, music groups, orchestras, things of that nature. During COVID, the goal was to simply reschedule those rather than losing them entirely. We didn't try to cancel anything. We just pushed it out further. And that worked out really well for everybody. And then, pretty much by year twenty-two, twenty-three, the season was getting very, very full. It's getting very competitive for different groups, and with us trying to fit more and more school things into the calendar. So at this point, unless something is, you know, opens up, we're not really actively looking for very much anymore. Our schedule is very full. So just wanted to give a breakdown on how that works and what we're doing to make sure that we keep it full, but also not overburden ourselves with too many things all at once. Next slide. Quick breakdown on, you know, our history of expenses and revenues. This year, with our large performing arts season for the advisory team, you're going to see, we're planning on having many more tickets, because we have that whole team supporting that. And we are just looking at a little bit bigger of a year than we have in the past. Moving forward, again, breakdown of usage of the PAC, just very generically. It gets used a little bit by every, every group. So if you're interested, go ahead and take a look at that. There is a lot not on this that I don't add up. There are classes that are in here practicing all kinds of stuff throughout the day. You come in here, and there's students anywhere at every given time, so the PAC is used a lot. Moving on. And then, if anyone is interested, you can find lots of info on our website. You can buy tickets. I believe all of our shows are up for sale, with the exception of maybe a couple. But if you are interested in any of your shows, get your tickets early. You can also donate to many of the school groups directly there. Find event info. Our Facebook page has lots of awesome pictures and other event info. And you can always reach out to the box office or our box office email if you have questions about tickets or anything like that. Any questions for me?
Looks like no questions for you. Thank you for all you do in keeping this facility running for us. You see, we're a big part of the pie chart there, school meetings. Feel free to kick us out if you need it.
It's not just board meetings.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, all of that. But yes, it is a big chunk.
My wife and I don't make all the shows, but the shows that we do make are excellent. And I would say, for the husbands out there, it's a low-cost date, also with the wife. But yeah, the students are, it's just unbelievable. I try and get a seat usually in the front row, so we're real close. And it's really, really impressive. A lot of talent. And this, of course, comes from somebody who can't sing at all. More comfortable working on cars, as you know. So I like coming to the shows and very, very impressed with the students and the work and the sets that the woodshop makes also. Just, just wonderful. It's just wonderful seeing what all goes on in this facility.
I would like to highlight, too, that, speaking to that, most of what we do is definitely student-led, supported. So like those sets, you see parents help, but a lot of it is even up in the tech booth. It's all run by high school students that have learned how to run all of that. So there's not a lot of, there's adults in charge in key areas. But I'm really proud of all the work we've done to teach the kids all different areas of technical theater and acting and singing and all of that, so.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
F, Twenty-twenty-four Summer School Report, Mr. Mizziak. It's shift changeover. Stand by.
Now it's on. Good evening, everybody. As I have done annually for the last three years, this is kind of a recap of our summer school program. During the twenty-twenty-four Germantown Summer School Program, we've served eight hundred and fifty-eight students in both elementary and high school. This year, we worked very hard to schedule our students strategically so that when we were offering classes for grade-level bands, for example, K two, we tried to make sure that there were multiple offerings available throughout all three sessions so that that would mitigate the number of classes that we had to cancel. So that at almost every one of our time slots, students had multiple classes to select from. So this year, we had minimal classes that we had to cancel because we were able to strategically place students. So there were very few cancellations in terms of parents. We have waitlists for some of our classes. So as, in terms of scheduling, I think we've gotten it down to a pretty nice spot for our families so that we can offer multiple opportunities for their kids throughout the day and make sure that students are able to take the classes that they're interested in taking during the summer. In addition to our summer school program, at the beginning of the day, we continue to serve breakfast. And every morning, we serve over ninety students breakfast. And as a reminder, our summer school schedule this year was a slight change from previous years in that we used to have a one-week session that was between the end of school and the start of summer school. Because a lot of those classes could be integrated into our normal summer school schedule, we expanded some of those classes to become two-week classes and then pushed those into our normal offerings. So our summer school schedule was two weeks. There was a break for the Fourth of July, and then there was two weeks that followed. Within the report, I broke down the enrollment for our elementary sections. And as you can see, from the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we've seen a nice increase in the number of students who have been accessing our summer school program. We had five hundred and seventy-six elementary and middle school-age students who took place in our elementary program. And we offered classes from Lego builders and engineering adventures to outdoor games and food as fun. In total, there were thirty-four classes that ran for our elementary students, and we had twenty-seven teachers, ten support staff, and we had three substitutes that filled in any days that our teachers weren't able to make it. Additionally, at the high school level, our enrollment there was two hundred and eighty-two students. At the high school level, we run credit recovery. That is one of the few classes that enrollment does not matter for. We will run those classes for our students that need it. For our other sections, we carefully look at that to make sure that we have adequate students who are in those classes so those classes aren't running at a loss. But this summer school session, we didn't run any classes where our enrollment was below the threshold that we were looking for in terms of our calculations to make sure that we did not lose revenue on any of the classes that we were running. The final page of the report provides you a budget summary. So in the summary, I include what we have in terms of expenses, in terms of salary benefits, the support staff that's there. There's a section in there that's for time off adjustment. So during the summer session, every once in a while, one of our instructors needs to be gone for a period of time. Either that's because something that they had pre-scheduled during the summer and then we accounted for that, or if they were ill during the summer. So that, that's that small adjustment that you see in there, as well as the supplies that we are purchasing for our summer school program. The second-to-last line provides you with a total expense that I, that I included in the table above. There are obviously some factors for our expenses that aren't included in there, like the facility usage at KMS and GHS to keep those buildings open and air-conditioned during the summer. But those are the, the fixed costs that I can associate with the summer school program. The total revenue that we get for summer school is calculated by the number of minutes we're able to claim. So the very bottom line of the summer school report shows you the total number of minutes that we're able to claim. So as our enrollment has increased over the last three years, you can also see that the total number of minutes we're able to claim increases, and that directly impacts the revenue that we, that we receive in terms of our summer school funding. Are there any questions that you have about the summer school report?
Mr. Barney?
Of the classes that we offer, do you do an analysis to see if we're at least breaking even when it comes to offering those classes?
Before we tell parents that we're gonna run any of the classes, we make sure that the total enrollment for each one of those classes exceeds what we call the break-even point. So the break-even point for any one of our classes hangs out around ten. Part of, there's a slight adjustment. It could go up a little bit more than ten if there's a high cost for materials that are associated with our classes, but for the most part, those classes run at about ten. One of the big adjustments that we made to our summer school sessions this year is previously, we had caps for how many kids could go in there, and the caps were relatively low compared to what we do for our normal class sizes. So we adjusted all of our summer school caps to match what we run during our normal school year. So some of our classes that used to run around twelve kids as a cap, we increased that to twenty kids, which also increased the number of students who were able to access those classes. So we, we had a few less classes that we ran this year, but in total, our, our enrollment was up.
Thank you.
Jake, I'm curious if you've ever attempted to run any tech ed classes for summer school?
The closest that we have for that, we have some engineering adventure-type classes where students are building small contraptions that, that go along with it. The summer school offerings that we have are completely teacher-based, so teachers bring proposals for classes that they would like to run during summer school, and then those are brought to the board for approval. So they're, outside of that, that engineering class and the Lego engineering class that we have, there isn't a tech ed class that anybody has reached out that they wanted to teach. But that is certainly an option. One of the things that we've tried to do, and it's, the process starts in about December where we reach out to teachers and ask them, are there any additional classes that they would be interested in teaching? Last year, we had three new offerings to our summer school program, and all three of them ran with, with healthy enrollments for each one of them. So again, if there were teachers who were interested in teaching those classes, KMS does have the facilities that if they, you know, at the middle-school level, if they wanted to engage with a tech ed-based course, that we would be able to, to make that happen.
Any chance of running any in the high school? I, I know it would be subject to a teacher actually wanting to, to do such a class. So I was hoping any, as you know, I was a little disappointed that there isn't time for all of our students to take one tech ed class in high school. I just got the idea, listening to the summer school presentation, that hey, maybe summer school, we could get ten students if we had a welding teacher, for example, or the auto shop or something like that. Any possibility?
Yeah, the enrichment courses at the high school level would be very similar to what we do at the elementary and middle-school level, that if there was somebody who wanted to run that type of course, we would certainly look at trying to provide that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jake.
You're welcome.
Next item, G, Village of Germantown Economic Development Committee update. Ms. Kim Higginbotham.
So currently, the Economic Development Committee is looking to revitalize Germantown, trying to determine where to start. We have a couple options of Firehouse, Park Avenue, Main Street, old recycling center, and the old DPW building. So trying to determine what it looks like. Should we do a, an old historic downtown? Other options would be a new city center and then other developments or more green space, kind of trying to figure out what would be the best route for Germantown to take, what we want it to look like. Is there gonna be a theme? Is, you know, just trying to revitalize and get the community excited. So in that spirit, the committee is working on drafting a questionnaire or survey. There were some in the past from twenty-nineteen and twenty-fifteen, sort of kind of trying to take some of those questions and maybe revamping them a little bit or using the same questions so that we can see if there's trends in what the community looks like, how we're changing over time. In doing that, we're looking for input, feedback, and involvement from the community, the current strengths and weaknesses that we see throughout the villages, throughout the village, what it takes for the residents to stay in the community for whether it's shopping, entertainment, what does that look like? What is our current, what does the community currently offer? And then also, what will bring other consumers to Germantown, whether it's developing businesses, residential, or other amenities to the community? So kind of look, look, I guess, look out for that survey, and we would look forward to any kind of feedback as we move forward.
Fantastic, any questions? Thank you. Item H, Village of Germantown Planning Commission update. That's myself. We met October fourteenth. That was my first meeting as a member of, of the committee, or the commission, I should say, as the village likes to call. I'm gonna go over some of the, all the topics that were discussed. Some probably within, were discussed at length. I would recommend either viewing it or at least reading the packet that came with that meeting. We met from six-thirty to about eleven forty-five that evening, so it was a long one. We'll start, first topic, Washington County Farmland Preservation Plan. It's a tax credit program for property owners, encourages farmland preservation. They were just presenting it to the village to take in for information, or the planning commission to take in as information. No decision was made as far as how to go forward, and there'll be continued discussions on that. It does look like the potential map, or the map that was shared with us is mostly, let's see, farmland to the north, the north end of the village. And one of the bigger topics that wraps the school district in Arbor Village Development is the multi-phase build-out of five-hundred-and-seventy-five, five-hundred-and-eighty-five total residential units consisting of ranch, two-story town home-style duplexes, four units, six units, and fourteen-unit multifamily condominiums, and forty-two unit and sixty-unit three-story apartment buildings with underground parking. It would also potentially include twenty-four thousand square feet of total, in total, of commercial development with apartment buildings above it. The developers stated these are owner-occupied. They did hint, once again, at that commercial space potentially being rental above it. The village staff at the meeting presented, did not support the rezoning proposal that was on the table, provided the reasoning verbally and in writing, so please refer to that packet if you'd like more information on why village staff was not recommending the approval of the change. Several citizens spoke in variety, variety of thoughts and issues regarding that. Clerk Barney had come and spoke as a citizen as well, sharing some concerns that probably align with some of the school board. As a member of the commission, I think the developer who we met with prior to this presentation, he did take into account some school impact and a light study around that included in his proposal, the, as well as the multi-phase build-out, which would make it a little more manageable for, for our district, school district, to manage any potential incoming students that this development would offer. I did share some concerns, mostly around just general development of residential or high-density residential developments. It's kind of key to note, this one is particularly located off of Donjes and Old Fatalek, right behind the school district office. That is incorporated along with potential sites for the village center and the main street, Blackstone, which Higginbotham spoke about, all affecting the MAC Elementary School District, specifically, probably with some spillover into county line as far as this development kind of happening on the east, southeast end of the district, would make it a little difficult to manage. But the position for the board at this time is to just monitor the information that's coming in, as these are just proposals, and, and try to work with that as best we can as we strategically plan. The board, or the commission seemed receptive of that information, and I appreciated that. They did vote against the approval. It is sent to the full village board for continued consideration. I guess, I believe it's, I'm not sure if it'll be on tonight's meeting for them, but it did go through with a positive recommendation for denial of the rezoning. One Energy Development LLC presented a proposal, a site proposal, a thirty-acre solar energy farm. This is located adjacent to the Rockfield School. There was several, I guess, I won't call, I won't classify them as concerns, but there were several citizens that spoke up, either local to the development as far as what a solar farm means to have in their backyard. But this was woven in with the town of Germantown, who had a member of their board present and provided concerns. I guess the complicated portion of this project is the development would occur in the village, on Village of Germantown jurisdiction, but Rockfield Road itself is responsible, the town of Germantown is responsible for Rockfield Road, and there's concerns about the equipment it would take to build out a project like this and the condition of the road. And we'll note, one portion of it is some of the local citizens did notate they had concerns about that in conjunction with school functions happening and what the parking looks like around that building during, beyond normal school days as far as extracurricular activities, bringing parents in, parent-teacher conference. I think that's a known quantity by, by the district and the board. I would like, hopefully that'll be kind of addressed in the facilities use study, which we'll talk about later tonight. But they'll continue to monitor, and that's gonna come back, I believe, for further discussion in November. Truck Country, which is one of the TID developments off of Holy Hill Road, had a approval from that commission, which is going to the full board to continue with their development. And then Newman Residential Development had the second phase of the subdivision off of Freistadt and West Pleasant View Drive. Commission postponed for further discussion on that with some concerns around a neighbor, and I believe it was, I don't know if it's a horse ranch exactly, but it sounds like some of those were the concerns as, as far as the interactions with the development and what they had going on there. So that'll come back for further discussion. And that is all I have. If anyone has any questions? See none? Item four, citizen comment, I have one, I believe. Michelle Griffin-Wenzel, GEA rep.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Griffin-Wenzel, and I'm a full-time educator here at Germantown High School, and I'm here tonight as the GEA representative. Please let me know if you have any questions, and I will try to answer them to my best ability. If I cannot answer those questions, please allow me time then to take them back to our executive leadership team, and then we can definitely follow up with you. So, thank you. And I hope you're not freezing cold like I am right now.
It's a little chilly. Thank you. Item five, consent agenda. So consent agenda, A, approval of September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes, B, approval of October seventh, twenty-four meeting minutes, open session only, C, approval of teacher resignations, D, approval of donations.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion, or would anyone like to pull any of these specific items out for further discussion?
Yeah, can we hear a highlight on the donations, please?
For sure. We had an anonymous donation for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to GHS Girls Golf. For development, a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar donation to GHS Girls Golf. An anonymous donation of a thousand dollars to the Germantown School District baseball facilities. Kennedy Middle School PTA donated two thousand dollars for smart board pens. Kennedy Middle School PTA donated one thousand dollars for Junior Achievement BizTown for Kennedy Middle School. And a new business in Germantown, Jersey Mike's, paired with the school district. Every employee and every student received a gift card for a Jersey Mike's sub at specific dates based on elementary, middle, and high school. And all you had to do was make a three-dollar donation towards the school district, and based on participation, Jersey Mike's is giving us a checkback for three thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars this Friday. They're going to take a picture of this with a very big check that says Jersey Mike's on it. We thank them as a new startup business coming to the district and asking how we could partner together for a benefit for us and, and for their publicity of kicking off as a new restaurant on McQuaid Road.
Fantastic. I have one question. On the resignation, I'm seeing a recommendation for a motion separate. Do we need to do that, or because it's a consent agenda, it should be all done at once?
We do not, as long as you approve the consent agenda.
Does it need any specific language around this one?
Nope.
Okay. Now with that, I'll hear a motion.
I already got a motion.
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? That consent agenda passes. Six Buildings and Grounds Committee. Mr. Powell.
Thank you. A little background before we get into the details of the last few meetings that we've had. Facilities Master Planning Service Request, a sort of an RFP, was sent out this past summer. Ultimately, the district administration asked JP Cullen, C.D. Smith, and PRA to present their approach and proposals as it relates to our facilities condition assessment, long-range planning services requests. Ultimately, the evaluation criteria used to select the firms that did present, those three, were completeness of proposal, technical qualifications and competence, record of past performance, and approach to work. Presentations from all firms were held with the district administration. Russ was able to attend one, I attended both. Ultimately, it was determined that all firms should be present, or should present to the Buildings and Grounds Committee with other board members invited to attend. So on September thirtieth, C.D. Smith and PRA did their presentation, and the next day, October first, JP Cullen presented. During these sessions, the committee made sure to note to all of the firms that are focused on, is on the creation of the long-range facilities plan and not anything beyond that request at this point, including any potential referendum. So that's not on the table. It would constitute a one-time cost design-build contract. On October seventh, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met to have our discussion regarding the expectations of a long-range facility plan, as well as which proposal would best fit the district's needs. Ultimately, the committee recommended that the project be awarded to JP Cullen, serving as the construction management firm and primary point of contact with PRA as secondary for the architectural support with a contract not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. That recommendation was sent to the Finance Committee, which met earlier this evening. Mr. Loth will give us that update here shortly. That is all from the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Fantastic, thank you. Any questions? See none? Item seven, teaching and learning. Ms. Higginbotham. Item seven, teaching and learning. Miss Higginbotham.
Okay, uh, the October seventh Teaching and Learning Committee, Jake brought a couple informational items for us. Um, the first one was a look at the next steps for the portrait of a graduate. Um, we realize here in Germantown that, um, prepping for, um, graduation doesn't start when we step into freshman year. It starts as soon as our students walk into kindergarten. We want to start developing them towards all of the attributes, um, that, um, Germantown seem feels is, um, what's the word? What we value as far as what a student needs to graduate and and be successful beyond these walls. So in doing that, um, we're looking to build a evaluation plan where we can collect and analyze data and then communicate and discuss the findings. These will, our ultimate goal is to continually improve all of our programs throughout the district from kindergarten through eighth, uh, through graduace- graduation. Um, we'll look at curriculums, programs, and opportunities that range from kindergarten to twelfth, and then build upon the skills, attributes, and responsibilities that prepare students for life after graduation. So I'm glad that we're, we're looking across the board, we're looking at all of the, the, um, elementary schools, the, uh, middle school, to say, how do we get our programming to prepare our kids for every next step, not just the, the level that they're in or the next grade. So, excited to see, there is, um, Jake brought forward a program evaluation framework, an overview in the packet, if you want to take a look at that, but it's a whole plan for us to really take a hard look at, um, how we get a child from kindergarten to graduation. So excited for that. Uh, the other topic was a state report card update. It was a rather lively conversation, so I, you could just take a look at that, but, um, the Department of Education brought forward some changes for the twenty-three, twenty-four, um, both affecting the state report cards and also the forward exams for our district and our students. Uh, some of the changes were made to the ELA sections and math, which makes scores from prior years not comparable, which is obviously an issue that is concerning for all of us to kind of see how our kids are developing year to year. Um, they also, DPI changed and lowered the cut scores for proficiency levels, another concern to the board and the district. Um, so our conversations revolved around the impact to the district and our students, and how the board can mitigate the loss of comparable data, and how we can use a new test to ensure, um, Germantown's curriculums continue to challenge, engage, and prepare our kids. So, knowing that there are some difficulties now moving forward, I'm starting to kind of over from scratch, we still want to use the data that the forward tests bring, um, to benefit our kids and change and improve our curriculum. So.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope, just looking for questions, if anyone had any. I don't see any. Anything further from you, Kim?
Nope.
Item eight, Personnel Committee, Mr. Brown.
All right. It's customary that Mr. Noak brought us up to date on staffing and teacher retention. This time, Mike had prepared additional year-end numbers for the teacher retention report and also spoke to spoke to our enrollment update. Staffing update, most notable this time round was report of our, um, since the time of our report for that meeting, there are no teacher vacancies. For some non-teaching staff vacancies, Dr. Reuter spoke to various strategies that he and Mr. Noak are using to attract, uh, talent, including but not limited to using Indeed and focusing on internal candidates. Teacher retention report, Mr. Noak prepared information that comprised our data, that compared our data with surrounding community members of SPAM. School Personnel Administrators of Metro Milwaukee. Bottom line was that our retention numbers are right in line with the average retention of SPAM members. Those numbers, however, are well below the overall Wisconsin retention numbers. Across Wisconsin and the country, we have seen, and there's been a lot of attention to this lately, being given that there was a four to five percent increase in teachers leaving within these most recent years. In Wisconsin, the average was eleven point five from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-three, and of that, two thousand twenty-three saw spike up to fifteen point eight percent. Germantown School District was well below both of those numbers. Dr. Reuter addressed what we can do and what we have done in areas such as teacher compensation and benefits coverage, which I will address shortly, and looking at other data, um, looking at other data presented, Director Pollock pointed out that other, what other members had also derived regarding the Germantown School District being a net destination of teachers, i.e. there are more teachers seeking employment with Germantown School District than we have leaving for other districts. Last of the reports was the enrollment update. We covered the third Friday count and how that affects our budget and spending. Third Friday is the student enrollment count up to that date, which is used in the calculation for our district's funding from the state. It also is very helpful in, uh, determining the number of, uh, staffing throughout our district. Uh, the item of new business which we'll have action on tonight, uh, is the insurance and benefits renewal. For this part of the meeting, Michelle Falke from R and R Insurance joined us. Michelle will be at the Kennedy Middle School on October twenty-ninth at three-thirty and four-thirty to go over the preceding information in depth and answer questions regarding insurance and benefits. Open enrollment will begin in November for start date of January first. Germantown, Germantown School District now has a full year of benefits, uh, under self-funding, and the twenty-four, twenty-five, or the twenty-five plan looks to be even more positive, with expanding coverage and enhanced benefits without increasing in cost to the employees nor the district. The benefit to self-funding is, is that we work directly with consultants like Michelle and R and R and go out to the market to acquire appropriate coverage at the best rates. Over the last few years of rising costs, over the last few years, rising cost inflation has been, uh, the worst or the most notable in the healthcare industry. Wisconsin specifically is the fifth most expensive state for insurance, due primarily to covering catastrophic losses in prescription drugs, both up approximately twenty percent. That being said, staying with UMR as our provider, Michelle was able to increase existing coverage and benefits by identifying NEXUS in our area specifically to provide enhanced lineup of, um, of, um, providers and, uh, including Aurora Children's and Frederick, Frederick Medical College. Uh, dental and vision is remaining the same. Life and disability, we're still utilizing NIS, but also looking at other providers, possibly Mutual of Omaha. And again, this was just the thirty thousand-foot view of the overall benefits and insurance, but, uh, there'll be more in-depth information for our enrollees on October twenty-ninth at Kennedy Middle School at three-thirty. Questions?
What, what?
Mike, you had anything?
What was that?
There's sessions at three-thirty and four-thirty.
Three-thirty and four-thirty.
For all the tree staff.
I'm sorry, what is the last part?
Just use your mic, you can.
Sorry. Well, the open enrollment meetings are at three-thirty and four-thirty, the four-thirty being for our elementary staff.
Oh, okay.
What was that acronym, SPAM, again?
SPAM.
For viewers at home.
Let me go over again.
You can make a fight in his house.
Uh, School Personnel Administrators of Metro Milwaukee.
Okay, got it.
Um, and we do have an action on that one.
Yep.
So if you want me to bring forward the motion. We bring forward with the positive recommendation to the full board to approve the proposed UMR options for health insurance and coverage for the twenty-twenty-five plan year and dental slash vision plans through Delta Dental and Delta IMED in Germantown School District for the twenty-twenty-five plan year, with all costs noted in the document provided.
Fantastic. It comes forward as a positive recommendation, does not need a second. Do we have any discussion on that? I think the increase in costs is, uh, fantastic. I was a little surprised. It's a good surprise. Yeah, a couple of things cleared, and you were notating in there, absolutely no additional cost to the staff, and then, um, if they choose and they, it was presented in the packet, but this tier-one scenario, it's southeast Wisconsin, uh, providers, you can actually, um, the, the twenty percent, I just wanted to make sure I got the number right. Out of, out of pocket on that?
Ah.
The, the twenty percent coverage.
Yeah, and the tier one is a hundred, and then tier two is the eighty-twenty, which is what currently we're in.
Correct. What I'm trying to say is, they, they'll save, they don't have to split that twenty, eighty-twenty, them responding for the twenty percent. If they're tier one, it's a hundred percent coverage and no cost to them.
Correct.
In those
Right.
Given areas. And that's what the part of attending these educational sessions would be greatly benefited, because they'll explain where those are. It looks like a really significant area. It's almost the entirety of southeast Wisconsin, almost up through Dodge County. Can you find a lot even?
Right.
There was a map that was presented. Either way, you'll find more information on it there. The point being, you have a chance to, to reduce your healthcare costs, the twenty percent, so. Um, with no additional cost to yourself or the, or the district, just creative promulgation, uh, solving that we're kind of looking for in this and that ability we have in a self-funded or self-insured environment. So, thank you for the work on that end and the work, continued work of the committee that drives that work. So, any other discussion? See none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. And Mr. Brown, anything else on that?
Nope, we're done.
Okay. Nine, Finance Committee. Mr. Loth?
Yes, Finance Committee met earlier this evening at six fifteen PM. I, I don't know about that time, but the day, uh, I believe will be this way from here on out, uh, Finance, the night of the board meeting. Um, uh, the, the committee meeting was, what was it? Nine minutes?
Nine minutes. Kind of long.
So I think, yeah, six fifteen was a little bit early for a start time. I think it's something we will, uh, always have to deal with so that we don't run into the board meeting. Uh, tonight was not one of those nights, uh, but my general rule has been, if there's a speaker, someone coming to speak to finance, it's automatically an hour-long meeting. So we'll, we'll figure it out. As we go, we'd like to end at, uh, about six fifty-five, just to give us a little time before the board meeting. Anyway, it works out good for me, actually, and good for, uh, Brittany Alton Dorf, also. It gives her a little more time to, um, complete the vouchers for the month in so doing. So, full board, item nine-eight, committee meeting update. Brittany went through a few questions for, uh, vouchers, and we approved the vouchers. And then, a full board, item nine-B, we're going to go with the Cliffs Notes version here because, uh, Brittany Alton Dorf covered this in Finance. It's the long-range, uh, facility planning, and Mr. Tracy Pollock, uh, just did a nice job, uh, based on the Building Committee report. So I'm just going to go right into it. Um, motion to, motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the Board of Education to hire JP Cullen and Plunkett Resich Architects to conduct the comprehensive facilities conditions assessment and facilities master plan in the amount of twenty-one thousand, using the district's general fund.
That comes forward as a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to, uh, point out, Mr. Shannon Metaxen and Ms. Katie Luth from JP Cullen are here this evening as well, so thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for coming. Just add a few things on there. Uh, I appreciate the work of the committees on both of this and the understanding of Finance. I know this was initially brought, I believe, about a month or so ago, um, and I thought it was important, not only for the entirety of the board to hear all of the information before making this decision, but also for our, um, potential providers to present and put that information out to the public. That way, we're starting more of a transparent note, and and we're not, um, looking on the back end as these projects move along to build that, that information, uh, that base of knowledge. Um, so thank you for, um, coming back a second time, presenting not only to the board but the public. I did hear multiple comments from the public. Uh, it was nice to hear from both, both parties, or actually all three parties in this scenario, um, and that was helpful for us. So, thank you for that. Thank you for understanding our need for that. Comes forward. Any other discussion on that? Can't think of any. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. And that was it for Finance. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Ten, new business, a discussion action to approve early college credit program, Start College New Application with Mr. Miziak.
The Early College Credit Program is a statute that allows the Wisconsin public and private high school students to take one or more courses at an institution of higher education for high school and/or college credit. Under this section, institutions of higher education means an institution within the University of Wisconsin system, a tribally controlled college, or a private nonprofit institution of higher education located in the state. Uh, every year, I bring these applications to you in October and in March. Uh, so these are the applications for the spring semester. So the Germantown High School had three students submit all the paperwork to attend an institution of higher education for the spring or summer term of twenty-twenty-five, uh, through the ECCP program. Students applied for courses including abnormal psychology, American Sign Language, and medical terminology. All paperwork was submitted prior to the October first deadline. The other program that our high school students have available to them is called Start College Now. Uh, Germantown had eight students submit paperwork to attend with a Wisconsin Technical College in the spring. Students submitted the Start College Now applications in a variety of courses, including landscape design, advanced OO programming, and intro to pharmacology. Uh, five students applied for the Certified Nursing Assistant CNA program. And again, all the paperwork was submitted prior to the October first deadline.
Fantastic. I'll hear a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve the early credit college program and the Start College Now requests as presented.
Second. Miss Higginbotham. Mr. Pollock with the motion, Miss Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Ten-B, discussion action to approve overnight field trip request, FBLA, Mr. Ken Ezrow. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good evening. I am, this is all. Good evening. I'm Ken Ezrow, business education instructor here at Germantown High School. And I am the incoming FBLA advisor and, uh, have an opportunity to, uh, attend the Fall Leadership Conference in, uh, Stevens Point on November fourth and fifth, and this will be an opportunity to help accelerate my ability to be, you know, uh, the best advisor for the club. We have, uh, over a hundred and twenty students that participate in it, and it's, uh, been very successful. Our students compete very well, the local, regional, and national level, and I want to make sure that, uh, there's no lapse in that, uh, advisory. Additionally, uh, we have a student, Nick Sosha, who's been elected to a state leadership role for FBLA, and I will serve as a chaperone for him for the, for this trip. Uh, I'm submitting a request to have my registration and hotel expenses totaling a hundred and seventy-six dollars, uh, as advisor and participant, uh, to be covered to come out the activities
Fantastic. Any questions? See none? Uh, I just want to thank you for your commitment to the program, and obviously being a mentor to these students in that, that capacity is fantastic. So thank you for that. Um, beyond that, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion approved overnight travel request for a student advisor to travel to Stevens Point from November fourth through fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Thank you again. Item eleven, closed session, eleven-A, motion to enter into closed pursuant, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute one nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-C, to consider the employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any employee A personnel matter.
So moved.
Roll call.
Ew.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Barney's a yes. Loth?
Here. Yes.
Medved?
Yes.
Pollock?
Yes.
Higginbotham? Pollock?
Yes.
Higginbotham?
Yes.
We are not.
We're not coming back.
We won't be coming back out, so thank you for coming. Let's drive safe.